Eighth meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Um, which is a totally uh remote zoom meeting. Um, for starters, um, let me take a uh roll call of the members that are here. Elizabeth Akerst Moore.
Uh, I'm here.
Excellent, Mr. Feiya.
I'm here.
And Elizabeth Dwyer Leonard.
Here.
Excellent, and Chair Teo Kinnaman is here as well. Um, there might be another member joining, but we'll, uh, we have quorum, so. Uh, let's get started with the first uh. First item on your agenda, uh, Joan McGate for a special permit on the zoning by law sections. Four, two, 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 and eleven, six, to allow the eve overhang on a permitted additional dwelling unit. To be point seven feet within the fifteen foot setback at one hundred and twenty-two Adams Road. Anybody here from the applicant to uh speak?
Yes. My name is, um, Tim O'Reilly, I'm with Backyard ADUs, um, and we built the accessory dwelling unit at one twenty-two Adams Road. Um, for Joan. Um, so as, as I'm sure you've read in our application, um, we, we made a mistake, so we cited our foundation. Um, outside of that fifteen foot setback, um, and is what we were working off of. Um, and we, uh, failed, um, in that sense to have that full eve inside of that fifteen foot setback. Um, so we, um, when it, when it became apparent this was an issue, uh, we talked with Paul and we talked with the homeowner. Um, and we're exploring all of our options here, um, of what we can do, um, to rectify it. Um, and so that's why we're here tonight, um, we filed out the application. Um, with the site plan, and so what we are requesting is although that foundation is outside. Of that fifteen foot setback, um, to allow that eve to overhang point seven feet, um, in, into that side setback.
Okay. Thank you, um. I guess, I guess this happens to the best of us because. Anyway, um, members of the, the board, any questions? Anybody? Nobody? Any questions? Nobody? Nobody?
Yeah, I have a question. Sorry, this is, uh, how is this non-conforming for the slot or?
Um, so we, we built our structure as fifteen foot side setback.
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I get that.
The zoning for the, the bylaw for the ADU says you have to be within the setbacks, but the board made my special permit.
Okay, 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 I see your point. All right, I was just wondering how we got it to a special permit and not a variance, so that's why.
Yeah, it's right there in four, two, yeah.
Perfect, okay, cool, thanks.
Okay, um, let's open it up for questions or comments from, uh, the public. Anybody here to speak? For this? There's none, and, uh, so I'll close that. Uh, portion of the hearing and I, we also did not get any, any written comments, just for the record. Um, any discussion, uh, from the board?
I mean, I don't see any substantial detriment to the neighborhood here, um. You know, I think it seems like it was an honest mistake, um.
Yep.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, really, really helpful that the applicant acknowledged that there was a mistake and that we're not. You know, we understand that he made best efforts and that he's not trying to get around a rule, but it is just a mistake. Um, so that we're not changing general rules, we're just acknowledging that these things happen.
Yep. But thank you, um. I, I agree with, uh, with all of this, so are we ready to issue special permit?
Sure, I make a motion that the application of Joan McGate for special permit under zoning by law sections four, two, 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 and eleven, six. So allow the eve overhang on a permitted ADU to be seven point seven feet within the fifteen foot setback at one twenty-two Adams Road be granted.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Feiya?
Right.
Ms. Akerst Moore?
Hi.
And she avoids I as well, congratulations.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Um. Seven oh five on the dot, um, Howard J. Soberg, Jr., for special permits. With site plan review on the zoning by law sections four, two, three, seven point two, seven, seven, two point. Seven point, seven point, two point twelve. Eleven, six, and eleven, eight, for a, a combined business resident use in the floodplain conservancy district and relief from. Parking for thirty-two parking spaces at one sixty-six Commonwealth Avenue, anybody here to speak, uh? On this project?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the members of the board, I'm Tom Falwell. From Combs and Newbury, uh, and, uh, representative of Damon Mill Square here in Concord. I'm acting as counsel for one sixty-six Carmav. Uh, Concord LLC, whose affiliate entity, uh, Aris Partners, has the, uh. For the, uh, property under agreement with the current owners. Uh, I wanted to pride you with an update since I. Last briefly appeared before you back in December when you agreed to continue the public hearing to this evening. Um, in early January, we filed amended application materials, including the revised project narrative. A revised set of plans, design, including design, architectural, landscape, and civil. Revised stormwater report, um, reading related supporting documentation. Uh, response to the transportation peer review letter. And a draft walkway easement and attached plan with the, with the town. Uh, in our discussion with Elizabeth, uh, we anticipated having required. Hearing before the planning board, uh, in late January in anticipation. Of hopefully having a, uh, uh, a report and recommendation from the planning board for this evening. Um, in mid-January. Elizabeth advised the town staff and, uh. And the outside consultant would not be able to provide, uh. Their input in that the planning board meeting would have to be, uh, pushed out till Tuesday, uh, last, meaning February seventh, sixth. Uh, on Monday, when I got in the office, I went online to obtain the planning board agenda, uh, for the sixth end. Uh, which had been posted late, uh, the day, uh, late in the afternoon on Thursday, preceding Thursday, and. Found that we were not on the, uh, agenda, so. When I inquired why that was so, uh, I was advised that due to the continuing delay in getting. Responses from the town engineer and the outside, uh, consultant, the planning board was pushing out a hearing until February twenty. Um, since we are confident that the project will not be materially changed. Based on the meeting with the planning board, we thought it might be most productive. To provide you tonight with the details of the project, so when we do obtain, uh, the planning board report, um. Recommendation, uh, we would, uh, not be starting from scratch, so to speak. Um, so if that process is acceptable to the board, um, would like to make a presentation tonight for your. Um, it adds to the, for the project, so that I, we know you have a. An incredibly busy next couple of, uh. Weeks with hearings on, on the comprehensive projects and, uh. So we thought it might be a good idea this evening if we could, um, make our presentation to. And to bring you up to speed as to where we, we are. Um. Um, as an administrative matter, by the way, I wanted to note that the agenda for the evening has an error on it. Uh, it provides that the applicant is seeking relief for thirty-one parking spaces. Um, the zoning requires twenty-eight spaces, we are providing fourteen. So that's the actual number for which we seek relief is actually fourteen, not thirty-one. Um, not sure where that number came from, there was a much higher number before when there was a proposed restaurant use, but. It's fourteen is the number, not thirty-one. Um, uh, so what I'd like to do is to, to introduce the development team, uh. Uh, to who that's here on the call, uh, for one sixty-six Carmav, uh, Concord LLC. Anthony Gagliardi is the lead person for the project applicant. Um, the development entity includes Concord residents Tom Sibley and John Garafalo, I think I saw Tom is on the call. Um, the project engineer and designer of the proposed building is Spruhan Engineering, uh, of, uh, LLC out of Newton. Uh, Helen Sevji, Sevji is the member of the architectural design team at Spruhan. And Omar Guzman is a civil engineer at Spruhan, and both of them should be on this call, um. Um, for packing, uh, traffic and parking related matters, we've got Randall Hart, who's a principal senior project. Manager from VHB. Uh, a landscape architect is Stephen Cosmos of Cosmos Associates. Uh, he's the registered landscape architect. And, um, last but least, not least on the team is John Rockwood, who's the principal environmental scientist from Ecotec Inc. Who's been handling all of the required filings and, and so forth with the NRC. Um, he's, he won't be on the call because as I say, he's mostly doing the work on the NEC and, um. These individuals, uh, on the Zoom call, will be able to address any questions that the board may have.
So, so let me, uh, let me interrupt here, uh, for a second, um, just, uh, sort of I can, uh. Confere with, uh, the board here. Um, we are, are we fine with the fact that we're hearing this, there's no planning board recommendation yet? Uh, but are we fine, uh, here to take a first crack at it? And, uh. Give, give sort of a first flush comment to the, uh, to the applicant?
Uh, I think it would be useful to hear the application, I don't know how much. I'm sure, I don't know how much we want to comment until we've read all, uh, what the planning board has to say, but I think hearing about the project would be useful, at least.
Robbie and Elizabeth?
Yeah, I think we can get through that initial kind of a presentation and understanding and. Like Elizabeth said, we'll probably be holding on comments until we. See a little more finalization of the record here.
It's great that so much of the team is here tonight, so would be great to hear from them.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
So, as for the project itself, the applicant intends to redevelop the site by removing the prior gas station. And current vehicle repair service facility that's existed on the site for decades, uh. Back as early as, before the sixties. And its present physical condition and use, uh. Most, uh, all would I think agree that, uh, it's not the ideal face that we want to. Present, uh, to present to those entering West Concord on Carmav or from Lowsbrook Road. Uh, clearly, the site's been calling out for redevelopment for an extended period. Uh, the proposed site and floor plans, elevations, landscaping, lighting plan. Other documents have been posted on the ZBA's, uh, website since early January. Uh, in summary form, the proposal is to remove the current service station building. Underground fuel tanks and associated apparatus and replace it with a new. Combined residence slash business building, which, and this is critical to remember, is allowed as a right. Uh, in West Concord, the West Concord Business Zone, so, um, it is an as of right use. Uh, the development team consultants can address questions, uh, on this, as the specifics of the proposal, if you have them. And want to do that now, but it would be under my client's plan, the, the, under my client's plan, the developer would include twelve. Residential, uh, units containing one, two, uh, in three bedrooms. Uh, two of which would be affordable, by the way, and a single small retail commercial space used on the ground floor. Uh, the roof of the building, as they'll show you, will contain solar panels, a, a common roof deck. Roof gardens for each of the residential units and mechanicals. Um, I do want to address the situation that developed as a result of the content of the plans in Jan, that be filed in January. Which we text us some proposed, um, what we call off-site improvements. I'm not privy to actual discussions that occurred between the town engineers from Spruhan. Uh, but when the plans were done and filed in earlier January, uh, they were filed showing an area. Which I believe is approximately seven hundred and eighty-one square feet, which is now part of the Commonwealth Avenue right of way. Uh, that was proposed per those plans to be conveyed by the town to the one sixty-six Carmav property to become part of the site. Um, this is an area where certain off-site improvements are planned, in reality, this approach was never envisioned. Uh, the, the conveyance by, is referring to, by the developer or discussed with the planning department and. So showing it in this manner caused some obvious confusion. Uh, although the development includes making certain off-site improvements. Within the, uh, the, the, uh, that area and others, including, uh. Um, crosswalks and, and to crosswalks and the like, there is and was no intention of the developer. Developers' path to propose any transfer of land, um, by the town to the locus, um, and we apologize for that confusion. Today, we filed with the town revised set of civil plans. Updated to, uh, this week, which eliminate any designated area. As proposed to be conveyed to the town to be, and to be added to the project site. Revised plan showed the work in the affected areas as off-site improvements, as is often the case. To be made by the developer at its cost and expense. We have a set of those revised plans we could share with you tonight, uh, desired. Um, at this point, uh, I think the most efficient approach for me to take was to turn things over to. Uh, Helen, uh, Sevji from, from Spruhan to take you more precisely through the site plan, floor plans, and architectural drawings. Um, Anthony Gagliardi and other members of the team, and so as I will be available. To answer your questions you may have as a result of, uh, the, of the, uh, of the presentation, so. Um, uh, with that said, I'd ask, um, Helen to. To, uh, share the screen and take over the, uh, leading you through the, the, the details of the project as proposed.
All right, um, let me share my screen first. Uh, do you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
All right. Um, good evening, everyone, uh, my name's Pilleen, and I will give you a brief explanation of the project. And revisions we have done so far. Um, so as Thomas explained, the, the site is in, uh, West Concord Business Zone District. And, uh, the site. And we are proposing, uh, to demolish the existing gas station, auto repair service. And proposing a new combined business and residential building. Uh, the site abits the Nashaba Brook on the north, and the adjacent property is on the east and developed. And the site of the Nashaba Bakery and other commercial and office uses. And their parking lot is actually immediately abits our lot. Um, and the site is also bounded by the Commonwealth Avenue. Uh, nearly the site, uh, the existing condition of the site is paved by asphalt and concrete. And currently, there's a gas station here and auto repair services. And along the Nashaba Brook, uh, there is an existing pedestrian pathway. Which also leads to the, uh, existing, uh, Bruce Freeman rail train. And also the site is, uh, four minutes walking distance to the public transportations. So we are proposing to demolish the existing service station and propose a new building, and our vision. Includes preserving the existing pedestrian walkway along the riverfront, while also enhancing and expanding the site. Into a public passage and green area. And the necessity of, uh, maintaining the fifteen feet upper zone from the river prevents us. So, uh, from positioning the building any closer to the water edge. Um, and to avoid the placing, uh, the building, uh, right next to the neighbor's parking lot, we have decided to. Propose our parking lot on the narrower side, across the neighbor's parking lot. And strategically position the building in between the riverfront and the parking lot. Uh, to allow easy access to each site. Uh, there is a small retaining space and twelve residential units on the building, uh, and which are requiring. A total of twenty-eight parking spots, as Thomas mentioned. And do, due to the restrictions and the challenging of the lot location and shape, we are only able to propose a fourteen. A parking spots. And two of them are dedicated to the retained space, and twelve of them are dedicated to the twelve residential units. And we have designed a six inches third. Uh, between the neighbor's parking lot and the site and our site to restrict the passage between lots. And parking space, spaces one and fourteen are designed, designated for residential use, will feature electric vehicle charging stations. However, if no residence on any electric vehicles, the manager overseeing the leases. Has flexibility to cover the charging station signs and allowing those spaces to be utilized by standard vehicles. And the red area is the area that, uh, Thomas mentioned, which will be improved offsite, uh, to provide. Safer and better circulation for pedestrians and vehicles, which was suggested by the engineering department. And also this crosswalk was also suggested by the engineering department to enhance the pedestrian circulation. Uh, there is. Uh, there is an entry and two exits to the parking, proposed parking, uh, parking lot. And this is the, uh, one-way exit, e- exit from the driveway, which only allows right turn for vehicles. Uh, and we have shown some signs, uh, along the site, uh, which maybe later on can be explained by the traffic engineer. Um, the main entry to the building is from the Commonwealth Avenue, and also there is an ADA, uh, accessible ramp designed at the front entry. Um. There is an entry from the green. Green front river side, uh, to the main building, and also from the parking lot as well. And here is the, uh, retail space, which also has two entries, one from, uh. One from, which is, one of them is accessible, handicap accessible, and from the, uh, below the entry, I, I, on the entry plus a below the second floor overhang. And the other one is from the Commonwealth Avenue, uh, which also connected with the sidewalk along the Commonwealth. And this diagram shows the pedestrian circulation along the site and access points. And we have been asked to show some turning templates, and on this diagram, we are showing a fire truck turning analysis. Which was reviewed and approved by the Concord Fire Department. The fire trucks can use two paths to exit, uh, from the site, on this one, you are seeing the exit from the. Only, uh, right turn exit. And on this one, you are seeing, um, exit from the other driveway. As I said, both of, uh, both of these options are approved by the fire department. Uh, we have an interior trash room, which is located here. And which is accessible from the parking lot. And. A wheel-out trashes and recycled containers will be stored in this trash room, and they will be, the trashes can, will be picked up by the trash company. And we are showing a trash track, uh, turning analysis, uh, entry to the driveway and exit from the driveway on this diagram. And a turning template for a pickup truck from the parking spot, one was also, like, requested from us, so we are providing this template to show that. The, uh, pickup truck can safely, uh, back out and travel from the one-way exit driveway from, on this diagram. So the proposed new building will contain, um, a total of twenty-two thousand three hundred sixteen point seventy-four square feet gross floor area. And the first floor is going to be containing seven thousand three hundred square feet. Um, gross area, which contains a thousand hundred square feet of retail area and ADA accessible, uh. Restroom. Two residential units are on, proposed on the first floor, a lobby, main entry, uh, for the residential units, ADA restroom. Mail package, uh, storages. Elevator and stairways, uh, stairway areas, a storage room. Um, a sprinkler electric room management office, and a bike storage area is also designed in, on the first floor. And due to the restricted driveway access, there is no designated area for Uber, Lyft, or Amazon drivers, uh, they will be parking in front of the. Uh, main entry to deliver packages, uh, which is following the standard practice observed in similar locations. The second and third floor plans remains the same in terms of the number of residential units, it's, each floor contains five residential units, and each unit's having a balcony. For private outdoor access. And there are one, two, three bedroom units in different sizes and layouts on each floors, and each floor has a trash room. The roof, as shown on the plan, has a common roof deck, as Thomas mentioned, and which is ADA accessible. And green areas proposed as, uh, roof gardens for each unit. And also we propose solar garden, solar panels, and also an area designated for mechanicals. The headhouse for, uh, elevator and the stairway is also shown on this plan. Uh, in the process of designing the elevations, we took inspiration from the buildings and architectural styles found in West Concord area, while also considering the design guidelines. Which was provided to us. After several discussions with the Concord advisory team, we focused our analysis primarily on the buildings they recommended to us. Um, so these are the new, newer and newer restored buildings in the junction, drawing design inspiration from historic architectural along, uh, the Commonwealth. And the mentioned buildings are including Saltbox Kitchen, Concord Outfitters, and Wood Hill Table Restaurant. Which can be seen on this corner of the page. And the common, the main common architectural features of these buildings are the store, the large store display windows, um. Four court store entries. Um. Signage boards along the first floor and along the structure, and cornishes along the roof's edge, and similar siding materials. And mostly white, uh. First floors and white, uh, window frames. And panels, and obvious large windows. So we have tried to incorporate these design elements, uh, to our building, to blend with the recommended structures. And we have proposed store display windows, um. On the retail. On the retail and smaller windows on the, uh, on the residential units, but we tried to, uh, protect the rhythm between them and the harmony between them. By proposing larger panels, um, to keep the rhythm and the harmony on the first floor especially. Uh, and we have designed a signage band on the first floor. Along the first floor, along the structure, and cornish along the roof edge to mimic the language of the other structures. And I would like to show you some renderings to better showcase the design. Um, we would like to go with the reddish color on the second and third floor, because there are many structures within the area which is. I mean, this is the main, main color which was used in the West Comfort, uh, so we would like to blend in with them. Um, and also we have designed our names, uh, in front of the, uh, front entry of the store. Retail spaces, which is also a very common, uh, architectural feature in West Concord. We have balconies, and this is from the Green River Side, this is the public passageway that lead us to the, uh. Rail trail that I mentioned before. And there is this ex, um, proposed terrace for the residential unit on the first floor, so we wanted to give it a bit of privacy, so we wanted to mimic the siding. And like, try to also allow the sunlight in, in this terrace. So this is the rooftop that we designed, this is a common entertainment area for residents, and roof gardens for each unit that. To, uh, have a better engagement with the nature and outdoor activities. This is the elevation from the Commonwealth Avenue main entry and ADA accessible ramp. The residential units and, uh, with small retail space, and on the second floor, we have. Five, uh, residential units on each floor. This is the elevation from the other side of the Commonwealth Avenue, and second floor overhang, entry plaza to the store, um, retail store. And we have also entry to the building for, for residents from the parking lot, which is here, and we also have. Our name, uh, above it. And this is the final, uh, rendering from the Green River Front. Hope you like the project, and if any other. Engineers or team members would like to have any input. To this presentation, please feel free. Thank you for listening.
Ms. Fallow, is that the end of your presentation or is there a?
Yeah, this is the end of my presentation.
No, but.
Yes, it, yes.
It's the end of the team's presentation.
We have the traffic engineers, we have the other team members here. If you have any specific questions you'd like to ask at this particular point in time, we'll be happy to try to answer them. But this gives you the overview of what the project will be when it officially comes for you.
Okay, cool, cool. Thank you. Um. I've got some questions, but let's uh, let's go to uh, the members of the board first. Um, Elizabeth, Elizabeth Ravi. Any of you have any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, could you just clarify the, the relationship between the parking lot for this proposed building and the one next to it? You said something about a six-inch wall. Um, I've been in it. I think those two lots and just remind me if they connect now or um, how that works and, and how it will work.
Let me find the picture if I have it here, the current condition of the parking spots, if I have it here. I think it's, yeah, it can be visible here. So there is no separation between lots, so there, I mean, the cars can pass to the, I mean, to each lots. So we had a comment regarding that, so um, that's why we wanted to put a curb between lots to prevent restricted passage between lots. So the, our, I mean, maybe Randy can answer this better, but I mean, uh, because like, you know, there, there's a traffic load, so we would like to keep it at this, I mean, low to like, provide a safer circulation for vehicles and pedestrians. That was the reason we have been asked to put a curb between the lots.
Were you, sorry, sorry, were you asked to put that curb there or? Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a tripping hazard. It's like I, I, I ever saw one. I mean, there's a lawsuit waiting to happen right there. Um, but, you know, because you know that people will be walking back and forth there. So um, kind of curious who asked, who made you do that, but, you know, that's gonna be, you know, the, the owner of the property. If this ever gets built, I would be the owner of the property's uh, issue, but uh, yeah. It's a tripping hazard. Um. So.
Randy, would you like to respond? Because it was the part of the traffic uh, comments, as I remember.
I, I don't think I was part of that conversation, but um, I, I do recall there being some discussion about the need to provide some level of separation and uh, you know, um, what, what's been provided, I think, was responsive to the comment that I recall hearing, but uh, but I wasn't directly involved in that.
Okay, um, Elizabeth, you have the floor still.
That, that's all. That answers my question. Thank you.
Um, our Elizabeth Ravi, questions? Nobody. Um, could, um, I, I, I have a, a, um, a question on, on the site plan. Could we see a site plan, the parking area that is dimensioned? That has any dimensions on it?
Um, I don't have any dimension on this, but Omar, do you have the plan uh, with the dimensions?
Good evening. Is it the, the site layout or is it like the parking spaces? I could provide either. Yeah.
Uh, a site layout that, that has dimension.
Yeah, uh, could I, please share a screen?
Sure.
In this layout, uh, we're showing the parking spaces being provided as discussed by Pelin. And we have the conventional parking space with nine, nine feet width.
Um, good. And what's the dimension of the handicap parking space and aisle?
Five by uh, eighteen and nine by eighteen.
Right, so. And this, this surprised me. You, you're not the, the first applicant that we see that, that, that does this. Um. If you read the M A B regulations or the A D A regulations, the, in the first or the only, if you ha- only have one, parking space needs to be van accessible. Therefore, needs to be eight foot wide and eight foot aisle. And so you're missing, uh, if your handicap space here is nine feet, you're missing uh, what, three feet? So you need to find three feet here somewhere. Um, in that.
But I believe we are not required to propose a parking, handicap parking spot here, even though should we meet that requirements?
Yeah, you need to have, you need to have for twenty-eight parking spaces, you need to have two handicap parking spaces. Now you're reducing or you're asking relief to go down to uh, fourteen, which then falls, falls you, I believe into a, into one parking space, uh, into one handicap space. I just, I'm gonna double check that. Yep. Um. But you know, where is that, you know, you know, that, that's gonna be a question that, you know, when we, I think, gonna start discussing this any further. Um. The relief of fourteen spaces is, I'm sure you'll tell us that these fourteen people are gonna be parking somewhere on the, on the street, right? And in the neighborhood, which is, I, I can understand that and some public spaces, but where is that one handicaps, uh, that, that, you know, you then also get relief from? If you were to grant this relief, where's that one handicapped person gonna park? Um. So that's, that's, that, that would, that would be my, that would be my question, but you know, please, please review the uh, dimensions uh, that are in the uh, M A B and A D A regulations.
Okay.
So that, that would be, uh, that would be one. And I, I also had a question on uh, on your units. Um, you said you had one, two and three bedroom units?
Correct.
Uh, how many of each?
Um, one second, please. Um. Two one-bedroom units, six two-bedroom units and four three-bedroom units.
Okay. Okay.
I, I guess on the number of units, I had kind of a follow-up to that. Um, you know, at the, the bylaw that says at least twenty percent.
Yeah, we have two affordable units.
Right, but two out of twelve is less than twenty percent, right?
Yes.
So you're just rounding down?
Correct.
Or rounding up to twenty? Okay.
Rounding down.
Two of the, two of the spaces are dedicated to the retail use, so it would be actually twelve.
Right, so two out of the twelve dwelling units is less than twenty percent of the dwelling units.
Should we round it up?
Uh, yeah.
Because it's point, two point uh, four units.
That's, that's common practice. That is uh, not just here, but that's common practice. You always round it up. And that's, that's, that's all, it's never in favor of the applicant. You round it up.
So three, three affordable units.
Yeah, or, or reduce the units, but you know, that's, that's the other option. But um. Thanks, uh, thanks, Ravi, for catching that. Um, do we have any other uh, questions, board members? I think we, we gave the applicant here a little bit to chew on, so. Um. But. If there's no any other comments, I, 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 well, it's just the need, just because we can. And we should do, if there is uh, any members of the public here, then I will, uh, will o- open up to members of the public to comment here. Um, yes, we have somebody else. Honora Weiner.
Um. My name is Honora Weiner. I live at ten eleven Main Street. I've been a resident here for forty-three years. And um, I feel that the request to um, waive the fourteen parking spaces is really something that can, the, cannot be supported. I, I go to West Concord almost every single day. I walk most of the time, within parking, the impact on parking with other developments and with um, the increased number of people who might be coming to this, this building. I hope the um, zoning board would not support a waiver of those parking spaces, because it will, the impact on West Concord would be significant.
Thank you. Um, any other members of the public, any comments? If not, then uh, then we'll close the public comment section. Um. Which actually uh, the uh, Ms. Weiner made it, made a good point here about the parking, which, you know, we just looked at, at, at the parking spaces. But you know, if, if we, if this uh, next time you're gonna be back here, you know, we, I enjoyed the, the presentation from the architect and it gave us an idea of what the project is all about. Um, but we would like to need quite a bit of uh, verbiage from your end, on your end and, and quite a bit of convincing from you on uh, exactly why we need to grant these special permits. Um, because that is a, uh, I mean, that, that wasn't touched on uh, tonight and that, which is, which is fine. I mean, it gave us and uh, this, this gave us a good, good indication, but you know, why, uh, why should we allow you the special permit for parking reduction, for instance? And we need, we need some, you know, and Randy, I think that's where you come in, that, that you will need to uh, to convince us that, that, that's a warranted special permit.
Um, can I share my screen a little bit? Please. Um. In response to the owner's uh, comments, I would like to mention one thing. So this project has been like under design more than a year. And this driveway layout has been in this shape after a lot of discussions with design advisory team. And this was before like this, and we had like lots of parking spots on this side as well. But they think that.
I, I, sorry, I'm, I'm gonna interrupt you here. I don't care where you were with this project. I'm, I'm just responding on, on what's shown here. And it just strikes me as, I, I just, I just can't fathom how any professional would stamp a drawing that doesn't meet the regulations of the M A B and A D A. It, it's so fundamental that it's, it's just beyond me. So, um, you know, I, I, you had a long, uh, you, you came from a, from afar with this project. Um, I understand that, but that, that we, we are not uh, deliberating on uh, once it gets, uh, once it gets before us. It's just that the basic items, it's just, you know, you have professionals on a team that, that put the professional stamp on these drawings. Um, you know, they, they gotta be correct. So, and if, if, if this is not correct, then you know, where, where do we go from here? So. Anyway, that's, 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 that's where I stand. And I think we need to, we need to get, you know, a better, uh, at least a better handle on, on why we should grant these, uh, these special, uh, these special permits when we get there. Um. I could entertain a motion to continue this, if there's no further comment from anybody. And it would be March twenty, is it March twenty-eighth? Is that when we are?
Yes.
That matched.
March twenty-eighth.
Um, March twenty-eighth, yep, at what time?
Uh.
So Theo, we have on the first, um, listing is Concord Housing Development from our last meeting at seven o'clock. And then we have five additional new applicants.
Five.
Right after that, yes.
So.
Seven thirty.
At seven thirty. Elizabeth?
Sure, yeah. I'll move that we continue um, this application by Howard J. Soberg Jr. for a special permit. Do I really need to read the whole thing? Let's.
You do not.
Okay, thank you.
Just the, just the address, please.
March twenty, uh, one sixty-six Commonwealth Avenue. Um, we continue till March twenty-eighth at seven thirty P M.
Second.
All of the favor. Elizabeth, there goes more.
Hi.
Ravi Fia.
Hi.
Chair for its eye as well. So, see you then. Thank you so much. Um, at, uh, on with our administrative items. Um, meeting minutes. I read them and I did not have any uh, comments on them. Um, and we can, if nobody has any comments, we can approve them all in one vote.
Um, I also read them and had no comments, so I'm happy to make a motion that we approve them all. October twelfth, November nineteenth and the uh, January ninth site visit minutes.
My second.
Okay, um, all of the favor. Elizabeth, there goes more.
Hi.
Ravi Fia.
Hi.
And Chair for its eye as well. Meeting minutes are approved. And uh, last item on the agenda and uh, is the, the discussion on or deli- and deliberation on the uh, John Peters appeal of the decision uh, of the billing per- billing inspector's permit. On the zoning law sections eleven point four point two to revoke the building permit, R twenty-three dash zero eight three six for an detached garage and office at three oh nine Garfield Road. With us here tonight is, uh, just joining is Christina Marshall, uh, our town council, um, who helped us or who wrote his decision actually for us. So thank, thank you so much for joining Christina.
Of course. Good evening, everybody.
Um. I'm looking at the attorneys here. Um. This, this is, this is where you all come in. Um. Anybody, any comments, uh, any, any discussion? Um, my two cents as a pretty much a layperson was that, um, decision was, uh, was great. It was a pretty succinct. Um, we, we could have elaborated a bit more on during the, the, the meeting about these items, but we decided not to. And um, it was, it was, as we all thought, I think, uh, pretty open and shut case. Um, so. Um. Elizabeth, Elizabeth Ravi.
Uh, yeah, I, I was fine with the draft decision. I didn't have any comments.
Yeah, I, I thought it was good too. I, as a board member, I wanted to have something productive to say to that guy at the end though, like some sort of, this is our decision, this is the end of our jurisdiction. Here's what you might think about. It just seemed like he was emotionally really bothered by the situation. And it seemed like because he's a. And it seemed like because he's a community member, like it just was important to hand him off or give him direction, I guess.
Yeah. Yeah, but you know, he, he, he was in a hole that he himself dug. And, and he was emotional that he didn't get out of that hole. I think, but yeah, where he should have gone, maybe that there was a need. Mediate, right? Don't, don't. Elizabeth, feel free to chime in.
So I town staff, the E P L M has been involved in this for a, a very long time and and I, and I completely understand your comments, Elizabeth, because we've, we've all been trying to support. You know, this moving forward, but my only caution to the board is, I think it's a very fine line when the board is acting within their jurisdiction on appeal. For you to provide any guidance for an applicant to move forward. So but I, I just, I want you to know that there have been a lot of people, a lot of town staff you know, trying to support, you know, what is a challenging situation. So.
Yeah, I mean, can, can we say? Will you, please meet with Elizabeth Hughes or please, you know, or counsel, just like a.
I wouldn't. I would just leave it really cut and dry.
I, yeah, it, it, that, that, I feel that puts the board in a very challenging position should should this appeal move forward. So, so I just, I do want you to know that there has been a, a, a lot of people, town staff involved in this, you know, from the town manager down. So it has not, you know, gone on, you know, unnoticed, unhelpful or anything like that.
Yeah, Elizabeth, I get what you're saying and I understand it from a kind of, you know, one-on-one human point of view, but I think this is just, it is what it is. It needs to be put in the record.
Great. Okay. I, I am learning.
We all are.
We all are this one.
All right. Totally fair. Yeah, it was a really well-written decision and I agree.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do we need to move to approve it? Or are we? I feel that we approve the decision.
No. Okay. So if you would please, I can bring up the decision and you can, you can actually read. And Christina can, but it would be where is it? I don't think it's approved the decision. I think it is accept the decision as written.
Accepted as, yeah, that makes more sense. Fine. Accepted as written. Christina, do you wish them to specifically take the vote to deny or accept? Is that okay?
That's fine. As phrase, that motion's fine. Yeah.
Thank you.
I will know, this is a bit of a typo. I think the footer of the decision references.
Oh, yes. So I do need to correct the footer on the decision. Also, at the very end of the decision, there will be the town clerks. There will be two signatures for the town clerk. One is when the decision gets filed, the town clerk signs it and then, and so I can bring up. So you can say that it's. I think you're gonna have to amend your motion, Elizabeth. To be the, the decision to accept the decision as amended tonight with the amendment to the footer.
Right. So I move that we accept the decision as amended tonight, removing the footer and adding the town clerk signature or whatever you said it was, right? Ta-da. There you go.
Okay. My second.
Elizabeth is done, yeah?
It was in December, wasn't it? No, it was January? It was in December.
It was in December? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I will add, at the end is the two signature blocks for the town clerk. Those will be that.
Great.
Okay, terrific. All those in favor, Ms. There goes more.
Aye.
Ms. Fia. And chair votes aye as well. So thank you. Thank you all. This, we just made it before eight o'clock, but that's a good.